We ready to begin?
Yeah.
All right, we'll call our Cleveland County Emergency Communication District meeting to order. Roll call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
Inno Owen.
There.
Terry Hendrick.
There.
Roger Hill.
Here.
We do have a forum. We had no one to ask to speak. I guess we don't have anybody here official board members. New business. I make a motion to approve it in a minute.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, reports from staff.
Okay, thank you. And so I handed out the September 2023 report. We issued 20 addresses in September. Finally, we had a month where we did not have any weather events whatsoever, so we were glad to have that following August. And we were super busy last month with all our normal things. With the addition of the evaluations for all our employees, we completed those and got those to HR. I closed out the ENPG grant and I started the process of reapplying for that, and that's pretty extensive. This is the, these are the guidelines for fiscal year '24 for that grant, so it's a tedious long process. But I did want to talk to you guys about the state work grant, Cycle 8. As you know, we were awarded the $239,000, but those three products were not 100% funded, so there is a little bit of difference that we, that I need for that. So I was going to let you guys know that. The back at Non-1 Center, we needed $16,200 some odd dollars for that. We awarded 14,600. The recorder was completely funded, so that would be a problem. And the radio upgrade, where about $28,000 more is needed on that. So it comes to about $30,500 extra that I'll need to get those projects up and going. So just to make sure everybody was okay with that. If you're sitting with that.
That's just a typical area of that, I guess. So you just need the 28,000?
No, we need 30,000.
Yeah, 30,000.
Okay, I got you. So you need to put that one with the 228,000.
So I could use it, so it says requested, awarded, and needed.
Yeah.
Did you, do we need it?
We got the money.
So, yes, we have the money. So like on the radio upgrade, on those state grants, you have to submit two bids for those. And so we are going to choose, you have to, on the grant application, you have to go with the lower amount of $202,000. That's why there's a difference on that. But we want to go with the 228,000 because in that proposed, those proposed grant documents, we got maintenance on it for five years. So we were, we thought we needed to go with that amount. So that's the difference on those. The other two are the same, like I said. Back at center was, you know, it is what it is. And the radio, the recorder upgrade, I'm not sure why they decided to do it 100%. I guess it's higher than what we're, so.
So you need a resolution?
It will be probably in extended time. I have submitted documentation already for the recorder and they will mail the checks to us next month. Next month is my calendar, right? Yes. They will mail the checks in November, so we will get a check totaling $239,000 some odd dollars. So at that time, we'll probably really expend any funds until we get those funds in. And then I would say probably two to three months after that. So I can just use what's in my budget and then come back if I need to, or, you know, whatever you guys.
Whatever you think.
That's where.
Um, I mean, I can, I can go with the budget now. You know, we always have a little rate in our 235 or 236 lines, just because we have so much equipment cost anyways. And I can just come and ask for an increase if needed.
Do you have the lady get that, get that flat tile or have her put a new by her own?
Sure.
It's getting that time of year, I just like to have that thing running.
The regular ones, or is it just radios back there?
That is our infrastructure. So if you go back in the back, you'll see it is a monitor and it's connected, of course, downstairs to the, and then it goes by fibers to the common building. So it connects all the repeaters to the, we can talk to them as well. It's not radio per se that you, that you get, but yeah, it's the entire software. And that's just on our side. That affects none of the responders, so.
The address. The 20 address, what, what parts of the county are most of those in it?
Usually fruit first. We've had seven rain burn, few in Hollis, so these are pretty much all over.
Or they're new, or they're like new homes being built, or just messing with our property.
And we had Bullmont Acres and Hollis. And we've issued a fee there. We have a couple of new businesses come to Hollis, so we've been working with those addresses there. And we have a lot of campers coming in and a lot of other homes. We, we will not issue a non-1 address unless they will be needing a structure on it, or they will be building a structure, so. And we do that because folks are calling just property dress and don't address property, so.
So how's the list doing?
Great.
Uh, as we get going, all those phone systems downstairs, is that obsolete stuff, man, right?
Yes.
How do we get rid of all that stuff?
And we can dispose of it, I suppose, with a work of the documentation on it and dispose of it. Unless there was, I don't think there was. So if somebody gave them away to a park, I don't think they would have the program.
No. Most of them are phone systems, you put a bigger head over there, keep them in the way.
Dove deals.
Go ahead.
Dove deals, Washington.
Yeah.
Unless they're surplus, somebody else may want.
I did contact our HEPA, folks are upgrading our HEPA system, and we are on their list. So they have ordered the equipment and we'll be out just as soon as it comes in, so hopefully that will be taken care of pretty soon too.
You have a question?
Still not closing the front door on the phone. Just want to make sure that it's something good. Is that the end?
Ms. Henderson?
No, I'm going to.
Okay. Any other business? Discussion? I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll call our need to order. Want to thank everybody for coming, welcome all our guests, thank you. At this time, we have roll call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
Inno Owen.
There.
Terry Hendrick.
Here.
Roger Hill.
Here.
We do have a forum. Everybody please stand with us, please listen to the flag. Ms. Cobb, if you'd like to send a prayer afterward.
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for having us here tonight. Father, I just pray that you will just lead in God's, make Godly decisions. Father, just be with everyone as they leave tonight, take them back home safely. Father, I pray that you will be with those that have lost loved ones, that you will just outlive this hour. Father, just be with us as we go through the week and through the holidays as they are coming up. Amen.
Thanks, Ms. Cobb. We have Ms. Melissa Chris Kirk. She will come and speak to you about the animal shelter. She brought her husband to make sure she doesn't have a hand.
You can go bring their seat here.
Hopefully, I am, this is just a waste of time. I hope that we have everything together now. We, you all voted 10 months ago to commit this $200,000 towards a shelter, and you gave yourself a six month deadline. So I'm here because we're four months past your own deadline, and I don't know exactly what the holdup is, the last minutes that are available or obvious. But there's nothing, you know, there that tells me that. In May, we were supposed to be working on a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county. And then in June, and it was put over the press orders, and that's kind of the last thing that's there. Myself and my board are working tirelessly on our end, doing everything that we have been able to do. We have been at every event. We have, are fully functional nonprofit. We field calls almost every day. We have calls and messages about homeless dogs and dropouts and animals and it's just almost a daily issue. And all I can tell you is I don't, I don't have the ability, I don't have, I can't hook you, I'm sorry. We have managed to get some animals rehomed, so we're thankful for that. And we're trying to get the message out to stay in there because that's going to be the true solution there. We should be a temporary shelter for situations like one we had this past month. Our gentleman passed away and left five large breed dogs behind, and we have several community members that are taking her and feeding those dogs. That's the kind of things that the shelter is supposed to be there for. So I brought Austin's stay in there, which was lovely. And that's pretty much all I have to say. I have so much around.
We have got a resolution on the bid, so we'll see what happens.
Listen, the fundraisers, I mean, they're successful, we just fundraisers haven't jumped.
We have not had a lot of big fundraisers. We have several planning, we did get a $6,000 grant for our office supplies, computers, printers, table chairs. Several of our ladies actually went to Marietta and got some free office furniture from the school that was closing, loaded it with a truck and trailer, just all with the women, just went out there, did all that. We got shirts we're selling. There's a lot of the grants we want to apply for that we cannot apply for until we have a broken order building. But what we can apply for, we are working on this. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. All right. Share from anything? Ms. Ford, any?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Copy, appreciate you. Is that enough for you, more?
That's good.
Okay. I want to possibly add something to the agenda, a little bit concerning a surplus coffee machine that I feel we get on during the work session. We had opportunity to trade in an old coffee machine for a newer model within our budget, so. Bid openings done, awards and presentations, scheduling, public hearing, consent agenda. Loop. One item, I think, is resolution number three, was not, uh, that would be initial, was the court fee, resolution number three. We'll make that second. But as far as the rest of the consenting, I'll accept them.
Make a motion.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Terry, you said aye? Yeah, okay. The manus? We have new business, animal shelter. Whereas Cleveland County Commission recognizes that the county does not have an animal shelter to provide impoundment and services for control and adoption of stray animals found in the county. Whereas the commission recognizes the requirement for each of the counties and our values provides such facilities and services. And whereas the city of Hefflin is also recognizing the need for such facilities and has identified and set aside property for the construction and operation of such facilities. Whereas the city of Hefflin intends to lease the facilities to a nonprofit group, and I suppose the blank can be the name of similar organizations for the operation of said facility to provide impoundment and services for control and adoption of stray animals found in Cleveland County. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission recognizes, recognizes that it is a public's good, and in the public good, that such facility be constructed and utilized for such purposes. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission desires to support the construction, but not the operation or maintenance of the facilities for the public good, now therefore be resolved, the Cleveland County Commission hereby commit the amount of $200,000 from the county general fund to the city of Hefflin to be utilized by the city for the construction of facilities on city property designed to be utilized for an animal shelter, providing impoundment and services for control and adoption of stray animals found in Cleveland County.
Make a motion.
I second it.
You got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Yes, sir. I got a question. Oh, I mean, where is it going to write $200,000 check? Just one check and that's, we're done? I don't know how to answer that, I mean, particular question. I mean, I suppose that's what the resolution is saying, yeah.
So can we, do you, I mean, I may be speaking out of term, but can we add that as a, as a where is in there so that I know how that money needs to be allocated? That way, when I ask them for invoices, we're just going to write a check? I mean, do you feel like this is in there for me to do that?
Go ahead, Inno. Like you're going to have invoices anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to endorse it, I wouldn't give it.
Oh, I'm not saying I need it. I'm saying I just want you to tell me, that's what you want me to do.
Well, I mean, if you look at the last sentence, now therefore be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission hereby commit the amount of $200,000. You commit, but what's that commit mean? I mean, are you just going to give it straight to the city of Hefflin? How, is that a good question? Yes, of course.
And that's one too, yes, exactly.
I mean, can make that, take the same as staying to do that.
That's what I said.
Do you want, does that need to be amended there?
No.
That is not. I wouldn't think so, if that's the commission's intent.
Okay.
The money's mine, yeah.
Okay.
I'm good, I just want you, I just want to support what you want, what I'm doing.
So it'd be $200,000, just write a check to the city of Hefflin.
Correct.
For these services. Okay? We have motion in the second, any other discussion?
Call it to vote.
Okay. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes? No. Okay. Three ayes, motion carries. New business out of the, whereas the Cleveland County Commission has continuously had difficulty in hiring employees for the engineering department. Whereas in an effort to make the jobs more attractive to potential employees, the commission asked the engineer to work with the human resource officer, with the human resource officer, to make a plan that would increase certain positions by approximately $2 per hour. Whereas the current pay scale has been utilized to make these increases in the form of step raises. Whereas there are 19 employee positions eligible for the increase in the amount to an increase of $86,630 to the engineers department salary budget. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to task the human resource officer implementing these increases and agrees to apply the increase, the increases to the engineers department, department salary budget lines effective with a paid period. And that's left blank.
I'm going to vote.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in the second. All right, goes in that forum today.
Well, tomorrow will be something up for me, but whatever, we can get it done.
Is there a suggested date?
When's the next paper start?
Next paper is going to start on Thursday. I think it's the 19th.
October 19th?
October 19th? Yes, sir.
And this is coming out of your budget, the funding that you gave.
Correct.
But no increase in your budget.
I guess, so you're going to have to show it as an increase in the budget, okay?
Absolutely. You have those empty positions, I have to assume that the, the purpose in you making this increase is to fill those positions. So absolutely it would require an increase in your budget and all of the salary you want.
I mean, you got the money in your budget, I guess.
But until these positions are filled, you do have the money in your budget. You have five positions that were empties and that are not even filled yet.
So from a budget standpoint, you would have to show it. You have to show it as a budget correction, to show we filled all those positions. But as it just stands, I can, I guess, I can cut it off, you know, that. But you will have to make a budget adjustment to show the condition.
If you replace, if you hire these five people, but right now, all the money's in your budget. It's just down the road, but you're having a hard time. Do you feel like with this pay increase, that you're going to be able to fill these five positions?
Ms. Hendrick has a question.
I mean, I agree that we need to do something. My problem is, these are, we got one job that's harder to hire for than anybody, anybody in the county, according to my conversation with HR. And that job's not on here. So if that's what we're trying to do, I think we need to do some more work on this and get everyone lined up. Because when I spoke with her, and she said there was a job at the jail that's harder to hire for than any of these jobs. So, you know, if that's the premise, then we'll just set ourselves up for a lawsuit. I mean, if we're going to correct the job that you can't hire for, then we need to get them off. And there's one of these jobs down here, that every time that job comes open, they line up here at the parking lot. So I think, I think we need to do some more work on this, but.
So you're on favor?
So where do I have the motion at now? You had the first, you had the second.
Right.
Okay. And we're talking about October 19th. We have a motion in the second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, this, so you're telling, you're saying that you have, you have the same issue going on in the jail as always your jails.
Three or, I think, four COs, three or four COs were down in an SRO.
Talk to Amy. Let Amy stand up here. You seem more than this.
Yeah, the past, in the past six weeks, I think we've lost four corrections officers and an SRO. So we can hire corrections officers, but we don't keep them. We keep them, the ones that have left, they've come in, they've stayed two and a half to three weeks. They've either find another job or they resign for another reason. But we're having trouble keeping those positions filled.
The same problem with SRO is they can go to other places, make more money. Same thing, we're having issues. The only reason we're keeping the deputies that we got is because most of them's under that contract with APOS. But once those contracts start falling off, we're going to see a turnover of deputies as well.
Okay, let me ask you this. The jailers with this same increase, with, their pay scale is based on this same operating unit, is it not?
I should say that.
For corrections officers?
Mm-hmm. Their pay scale is based, is it not?
No, I don't, I think it is.
Can I say something?
We've got 12, 14, 12.
It's going to be, I just can't remember what their grade is. I don't remember, they're 10 or, it's, it's close.
Ms. Hendrick?
Let's table it, do some more work on it, because this, I don't think this is going to solve our problem. It was a step in the right way, but this is also going to blow up our base building. So we need, it needs more work.
You just asking?
Yeah.
Hand the table. To consider table.
Let's put a second.
That's right.
This is going to do with the sheriff's department.
Okay.
This is the road's department.
Okay. So you don't want table?
I would.
You want to go forward, we still have a second. Okay. Reading the vote?
There is a motion, and you have to go.
Oh, that's right. Is there a motion to table?
Yes, Mr. Henderson.
I have a motion.
Okay.
But I didn't like, he's got to prove it. He's got the first.
You just have to, there's a second. As long as the table is always going to work.
That's right. My man.
My man.
Okay. I did make a motion. We got a motion to table, do we have a second to table?
My, Jason, what do you feel like this point on a legal standpoint? Is it putting us, is it putting us a lot of difficulty?
Without further analysis and study, I'm afraid it could. Now, this was just brought up to me for the first time this evening, I saw these numbers.
Will you hold it, hold it just a minute?
Yes.
I mean, I agree with what you're trying to do, but.
It's simple, do it, and you're out with it. What can we?
This very first job in here is the assistant road engineer. As far as I know, every time that's come open, we've had dozens of people trying to sign up for that job, so. Sort of miss, the resolution's sort of misleading, and I'm afraid that's going to put us in legal problems. But there's something we can work on, I think, and make work, but I just don't think it's going to work like it is.
I second, I second the motion. I'm voting.
Okay.
For the next month. For next month. Because we still want to get it.
Get moved to all business.
We just want to do, we just want to move it forward until we have some more research.
Get moved to all business if the motion to table is successful.
All right, any other discussion on the table now? So you got a motion to table and a second, Mr. Owens. Any other discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any saying no? We got a no not to table, but the ayes have it, so we table it. For next month. Right. Yes, sir.
Do we need to task our HR person to research this and come up with a solution?
Well, I mean, I did, I did think that's probably in order, and we can add that probably in a few minutes. We won't have to add a few things. Okay. Come on, try to chat something. We're looking now at resolution, or is it number three that was on the consent agenda? Whereas the Cleveland County Commission previously passed resolution number 5287, which allows a $30 court fee to go to the engineering department for equipment purchases to be put in the general fund. Whereas the court fees will now need to be transferred to the public highway fund to assist with the payback for equipment to the reserve account. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to rescind resolution 5287.
I'm making a motion.
Also there. Any discussion?
My question on this, wait, or Lisa, what is the total amount on that court fee that we normally get? What does it average?
I would say it is in the $100,000, without looking at it, somewhere in the $5,000. And I may be wrong about that, that may be a combination. You have a.
That's a combination.
That's a combination, your tax and your fees.
It's like $50,000.
Okay. Yeah. Without looking at the number, I would think about that one.
That's what I was thinking. So this was.
It's one of the big battles that you're having from that form.
And what it takes for him to be able to pay back for what he owes to the county for the equipment that he's purchased is himself. So the business equipment, that's usually what helps you catch up.
Right.
It is. And that's, and that's all coming, a lot of that will happen, a lot of that will happen in March, October, so.
Okay, so we start to get it paid back off, we'll go back and look, we'll change.
That's what my question is, is that once this is paid off, I want us to be, for us to be aware of it, that he is. That's, that's what my question is, is that once this is paid off, I want us to be, for us to be aware of it, that he is settled up and good. Like, can we look at this again?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. That's my question.
I revote.
Yeah.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You can answer. All right.
You wanna add one?
I do want to, we wanna add, uh, while we consider this, whereas the Cleveland County probate judge requests the Cleveland County Commission to operate the surplus of equipment as follows. To sheva copier, before the Cleveland County Commission overrides operating the surplus of this equipment.
I'm making a motion, man.
I see.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of adding this, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for adding this to the roll in that. And then, and then, you, you said you wanna add a motion?
We need to add a motion to pass. We're told to. Come up with a solution on that, I mean, resolution, but.
That, that would actually include what you've been working on, but that always include our jail, the, the correction officers, I mean, we already said.
Just corrections officers?
That's the only position that we're having problems filling, is it not?
We have an SRO position open. How long has that been open?
Uh, since August. First of all, it's, and we've only had one, one official applicant that denied the proposal.
I mean, if it's this big a problem, then, then I think it is, why don't you just put your step braces?
Maybe across the board.
Costs less than this.
But I don't think it's gonna get you where you need with, with, with those operators and his correction officers. I still don't believe it will get you to the bottom of it, cause that's the destiny.
Did Mr. Medley just say that on one person, three of them cost pay?
On one, five.
The, the lowest amount of total cost of moving patrol agencies now is about at twenty dollars an hour, between eighteen and twenty dollars an hour. And we're just not, and we, we can't draw, in, in, in that position, we're asking for a certified person, which John and I both have expressed in our schools. We only want a certified experienced person because of the, the complexity of the school. Uh, so it's tough to get a certified person at that pay level, because they're coming in making the same pay as somebody that just, just went through the academy.
Yes, sir.
Can we make, can we task her to come up with two solutions in her opinion that, that would fix the problem that we have? To come up with two solutions and email everybody and then our next work session, we can discuss them and refine them or whatever we need to do.
How about you state your resolution? Do we want to task her?
Task HR with coming up with two solutions to the problem we're having with hiring folks and, and if we need to increase the base pay or whatever. For her to come up with two solutions that she's thankful to work and then present them to us at the work session.
Okay.
But she'll also need to contact her lawyer to make sure that we don't cross that line.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you, you do that anyway.
And just remember again, so we all know, his budget is sitting there with the money to pay for it.
Yeah.
The money that, you're talking about all these other people, it's gonna come out of the general fund. So if y'all have the money in the general fund to pay for it, that's a wonderful thing.
We, we, we're not going to, because it was putting us pretty close by just doing my.
Let's get back on task. We have a resolution.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna wait to comment that if we get sued, that comes out of the general fund.
Resolution, and who is the sec, do we have a second on this? Are you the second?
We're second.
Okay.
Let's add it.
Yeah, this is just an add. And you're, you see. You have been there on how the resolution?
I can come up with something. I mean, it's, it's gonna be pretty simple.
Okay.
I will say this, if, if the engineer were to fill all of his positions with this increase and he were, if we did, you all do decide Vegas, he will not have enough money in his budget for all of his. He, he could run out of money if he were, if everything went well and he actually filled all of his positions. That's just to say that at some point in time, we need to come back and mend his budget for that amount. And, you know, holding off might be fine for now, because we don't know how, saying, or if it's even gonna work. But if at some point in time, he might require a minimum to his budget, an increase in his budget or his salary requirements.
So does any, this agenda or not, add this agenda? May I add to your agenda right quick? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
No? Okay. The three ayes. Will we get added to the agenda?
Oh, can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Where are you getting the money for this? Are you using the, those positions that are not filled?
If, that, that's the reason, if, if you, yes, if you fill all the positions in, in the current salary item, we would not have enough money to fill all of them. But without filling those.
You're just using positions that have nobody in them, that, that's in the budget. If we have to fund, you're using that money.
Okay.
I have a question, buddy. Um, and you and I talked about this. Uh, the issue that we're having is you don't have enough people to do your work. You're having to take them off, uh, you're taking them off one job to go to another job and not completing. And we're not getting our side roads completely bush hocked. We've been, what, behind three years on those?
We haven't.
I was saying, so unless you fill those five position, we're still back toward where we're at.
But hopefully this will fill those five positions.
Do you feel like that we'll fill those positions by?
It will definitely help. You're still not, when you look at salaries for surrounding construction companies and stuff, you're still not close to those. I mean, those, those positions are still twenty-five and thirty dollars an hour for the caliber of operators that we're, that we're looking for. So to say that it's gonna put us equal with, equal with those private construction companies, it's not. But the few applications we do get, most of them either come in and, and leave because of pay or never accept it because of pay.
Because I know we're struggling now with, with employees.
Yes.
Uh, you're having to pull them off to do.
Basically, we pick one thing a day that we're gonna go do and that's what we're gonna go do.
And, and you're pulling them off. And like I said, you're behind three, what, three years on your side roads?
Yes.
Well, let me ask you this. Have you researched and seen what the cost would be to, to hire a contractor to, to come in? Cut these side roads, get us back where we need to be and pick up and go on instead of just completely backing up?
I did start making some of those phone calls today, but just to make sure we're clear on what we're talking about too. The three years behind on side on roads is because of breakdowns of that equipment. We didn't have, we could keep the equipment running to make a full round for those three years. So the reason we're behind three years is equipment. So where we're sitting at now is I've got the new sidearms and we have that, that capability. And through the summer, we was running them every day, including on Fridays. The problem I'm running into right now, since we started bush hopping, is it takes everybody I've gathered to run the two bush hop crews. So those sidearms are part of every week, except Fridays when I got some folks coming in on Fridays to run. As far as us catching up to bring the contractor in, I think that's a good idea. And I did start making some of those phone calls today to try to figure out what was around and available prices. I don't have prices to tell you about. Um, but if I could keep those sidearms running, it takes us a year to make a round around the county. And so within a year or close to it, I feel like we would have a round made in Bicawo. But then it still comes in to, you gotta keep them running, because if you don't keep them running, then you get right back behind. So those, those sidearms have to run here around. So the, the periods that I don't have operators, more than they're part, then we're getting behind on that.
So, so what is the number, what is the number that you would have jobs that you don't fill, that you'd have left over in your budget? So if you got four jobs, four or five jobs, now is that, is that just hourly? Is that benefits, that whole nine yards as far as that employee that you don't fill that year? Like this coming, this year we're in right now?
We're, I mean, we're generally all the, the salary that was been fixed.
Okay, so what I'm asking, so what I, what I would like to find, huh?
I, I'll find that one.
What, what I'm saying is, is let's look at, maybe we'll look at it this way. Let's look at that number. And then let's see if we can take that number and maybe contract that work out. Whatever the money that you see that you've got.
That's, that's what, that's what we're.
That's what.
Okay, that's what you're looking at?
That's what we're looking at. See how that, see how that does the matter.
Yeah.
So that's what it gonna happen.
Cause it might be that you just wanna start shutting a lot of stuff out and, I mean, just wanna hire, buy the contractor to do it. Get what you can get done and shut it down when you get done with it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get these passed and then when we get around to, if anybody, we can, y'all can talk about it then, if that'd be okay. Copy machine that we made added. I'm gonna raise a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You can answer. Tasking HR, HR, oh, go ahead.
I have a motion.
Whereas the commission desires to task the human resources manager with conducting research into proposed pay increases. And whereas the commission wishes to investigate other positions which have been historically difficult to hire and retain employees. Now therefore, the commission hereby tasks the human resources manager with researching the pay increase situation across all open county positions and proposing solutions to the commission at the November work session.
I have a motion.
Okay. I'll say it. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. You've been tasked.
Sorry.
Can you?
He tried to tell me to do it.
Yeah.
So can you move on?
Um, well, as some of our department heads already know, we are very busy right now and putting together things for, that we need for the audit for FY twenty-two, which we're a little bit behind on. Through some, some of ours that are busy trying to get to it, but also auditors are running a little bit behind too on some things. Um, they have already been auditing several other offices within the county. And there will be next week, their law audit, which is a very short, quick, easy audit. Um, I'm working with Melissa. She was up with me last week to work on some financials. We're pulling all the pieces together now and get ready for that audit. Um, let's see. Of course, we're also busy with year end. We're in the time of year that we're recording a lot of recalls where we're receiving bills in October for things that were, you know, actual expenses for September. So that takes a, a good bit of time too. I also have, uh, my finance part will be out for a few weeks, um, starting about midway through November. So I have advertised for a temporary hire, which I mentioned when we were doing budgets. Um, hopefully just a part-time person, maybe twenty hours a week, something like that, um, for twenty-four, five weeks, somewhere in that range. And hopefully to at least just keep us afloat. We are, between myself and my two, we stay just as busy looking at it all the time. There's no slack, there's no downtime. We cannot afford to lose anybody for several weeks. We just can't do it. Um, it's a constant struggle to keep up with the amount of work that we have today. And I'm taking test upon that.
Are you going to do a temp service or what?
I have not put it with a temp service. I thought I would just advertise and I could get someone. Um, the person that I would like to hire for that position is someone with, um, at least an associate's degree preferably in accounting, not just business. Because of associates career in business only gives you one accounter class generally. And someone who's a little bit more skilled than that. I would consider, um, someone with an associate's career in business if they also have accounting experience. And I know you're not gonna find, you know, the perfect person that's got, um, fun accounting experience, but at least I can get someone that has an idea of what a different credit are and that really makes a difference.
Do you think that was, I'm sorry, that may, because they do know that it's just a temporary position?
Um, I'm just, so I have not, um, I've not tried this before. I'm trying to do the best I can. We are gonna be in a bond. And I mean, we'll make do, but we are going to be in a bond without anybody. I mean, um, she does all of our, puts in all of our invoices, does all of our AP transfers, payroll transfers on the accounting side and our end-to-end transaction. She does all those things and it's just going to be real hard for us to keep up without her for that period of time. And I mean, that's just what you, we, we've cross-trained. It's not that we don't know how to do these things. We just don't have time to do these things.
Exactly some of those things, but I also have myself here. So doing both, like it's, you know.
So would it be better to move you over, I'm just asking, would it be easier since she knows her job and she can follow back? Would it be better that Krista moves over to that job?
I guess it just depends on if we can find someone with, with some accounting. Um, and, you know, Krista's prepared to do her job. I'm not knocking that, but I mean, she's, she's doesn't have enough accounting degree.
Yeah, I don't have a degree. I mean, I have experience in it, but not.
I guess it just depends on, um, on, you know, we may have to, some of the duties might have to slide over just a little bit. But hopefully if we can find some, someone that's got at least an associate's degree, that would help, just because that does make.
I hope that somebody that's retired might be just looking for some extra, you know, here. Doctor Mary, that was, I don't know if Mary would be outstanding or not.
Any other questions? That covered it. Thank you.
I think that's pretty much it. I mean, I would say just working on, working on off things for audit, working on year ending closing items, um, getting budget key, you know, those kinds of things.
Now, Melissa, now you're still using Melissa?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, are you getting more comfortable with it or how much longer are we gonna be compensating for that position?
I don't know. She just brings a wealth of, of, of experience and knowledge in this. You know, definitely like I said this year, hopefully, you know, I will be, I'm really comfortable with it, but I'm not there yet. We'll see after this audit, how I feel about it. I, um, I would say, I mean, it's a time-consuming process, no matter how you look at it. I was definitely more comfortable in the more what she made me to get ready for her part of it. And I say her part of it, I know all how to get everything into the right fund and that kind of thing, but then you have to get it over to governmental side. And that's the part that I'm still a little giddy on. Um, I do take notes and I do have lists of things that she's asked me to gather from last year. And you gathered those things this year. So I'm getting there. This is just my second audit. And I know it sounds like I, I have been here two years, but this is only the second one that I've gotten prepared for. So it's, it's a job.
I just wanna say you continue to use her as long as you need to use her, cause I, I feel real comfortable her looking over that, because if you don't have no better knowledge of anybody, then you got Melissa Williams looking over those.
She's a good person. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, Melissa Williams is great.
And she's great. I mean, I, I call on her anytime I have a question about something that new that comes up. I'll just send her an email and she's on it.
Is it former administrator? Former administrator, they don't know a lot from y'all. Stop. Mr. Anderson?
I got three questions. First one is, are we doing a state audit or a federal audit or are we doing both or?
We should have what's called a, it is a federal audit, but it is a, uh, federal civil audit, which is cheaper and a lot less involved. And we, we qualify for that because, um, our expenditures are not over seventy-five thousand dollars, not killing our opportunity. So we should actually, I've actually, I'm hoping when I get a federal one, I'll talk, I've sent an email to Brian about it. And I'm having her look at that, but it can vary worse. It's gonna be a federal civil audit, which is cheaper. Again, this is, I think it was thirteen or fourteen thousand for our audit, this, this last audit, kind of a full federal audit.
Did we ever change the bank?
I have, um, reached back out to the banks in the last week, um, asking them to update me on their percentages of interest that they offer. Um, that changes pretty regularly. Uh, right now, it does look like another bank may have a little bit higher interest rate. But I don't think it's gonna offset the cost that it would, it would be to, to change over to that, that bank. but I don't think it's gonna offset the cost that it would, it would be to, to change over to that bank.
You gonna be able to present something that's worth it?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
The ACCA is, is trying to address the drug market deal, have you spoke to them?
I have sent, I sent an email out today to Meg about it, because, um, I'm still like that with it too. I, I just, I know I've spoken to Jason about it several times, and I get questions, you know, can we do this, can we do this? And a lot of it's just not specifically addressed, it's, there's some general guidelines, but there's no real, you know, opinions out there about what we can do, and we certainly don't want to ever get that back. Because, you know, if we use it, we won't be able to use it the way that we won't have a problem.
We'd say some of those lawsuits still ain't settled, right?
Correct. There's a couple more that they're finalizing the settlement on now.
And I think I have actually reached out to a couple other counties too, you know, have you used any of your money yet? And, um, I know that common county has used a little bit of theirs, but it's been things that are really, like, very cut and dry, like a free grant or things like that, they've been really careful with theirs too, they have not spent very much of it.
I think ACCA, we got an email last week, that they're working on, we're working at something, what we're considering on.
And I think it's smart not to hold off, and, Lee's kinda smart, hold off and see, you know, how, how that works out for a couple others, not be the first man that jumps up.
I think they're gonna send, send some money to the Agency for Substance Abuse Prevention, which is there in town again. So it's been very specifically tied to drugs.
Any other questions? Lee? Any questions for Lee? Y'all had some questions a while ago, I un-rep them, but I was just trying to get through them.
Uh, the moment, Lee, is like, you are getting the information on trying to, well, see how the cost of bidding some of these jobs out?
Yes.
Tom Brown is gonna get too cold.
We might have some, we ain't done, we ain't done it yet, we still have space up to do. It's seven six.
Well, we're about to garbage the contract.
Um, we've got it, we're gonna get all signatures here in just a minute, so, got it, got it worked out.
Same rate?
Yes, it'll be the same rate. Uh, the, we do have the adjustment in this one, but it'll be the same rate for two years, and then, and then an adjustment that will be, will be looked at in the third year, so.
Back, back to your sidearms, I mean, those things are heated-cooled and enclosed, oh, you can run them all winter.
You run them all winter.
What, what, we're running both of those all winter? Four, five days a week, how, how much would that give us called up, because you're not gonna be able to do a whole lot of winter?
That's, that's what we always do with, with the silos, that's, that's when they run, that's when they run. We got, we've got to have that full year, I mean, it takes, even, even with the whole factors, a full year to make a round to get paid down.
Kind of that extra strength arm that they're now, since they've beat it up.
They ain't broken shit.
Another thing, if they have equipment go down, that just puts us even further back, and it seems like we're not getting called up.
I agree.
But we've only had those for three months.
Yeah. And we said, you said it'll take a year for third ones to get called up.
But, but my thing is, if, if we can contract it out for, for those five slides that you have not filled, to get us to where we need to be, and start fresh, I think, you know, with the solution.
Of course, you find somebody with sidearms to do that.
Well, you actually bid it out.
So you gonna bring some figures, where's the word? Mr. Owens?
Uh, what about?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I mean, what about our exemptions, they start this month, October's?
No, no, sorry, November first.
We'll put that on our website, the void exemptions. For IELTS.
Mr. Owens?
No, unfortunately.
When is the new bills gonna hit?
Um, you would say a month of the year, it'll be with the January due.
Oh, okay. I thought we'd be expecting any time. Probably get them in the last of December.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be that first of January.
All right, well, have your own business, any discussion items? I'll entertain a motion to-
Josh, you go, Josh?
I'll say an aye? Aye. Say a aye.